All right, we're gonna be starting with the Agenda Review Session. All right, first we have ordinances on second reading.
Actually, just the Council President, Members of Council, if you'll move back to D.
I'm sorry.
Liquor license, actually C we have approval minutes, July 5th, but with respect to D, public hearings, you have a member seeking here on behalf of his client, Castmas Inc., and I'm gonna ask that that matter be moved to the end of the consent agenda item, so that probably gonna need to go in close session relative to that matter before the hearing, because there's been some discussions relative to resolution, okay? And then you have the ordinance is on second reading. With respect to the first ordinance, O-071701, which is the record ordinance, we are going to ask that the Council carry that to the August second meeting. There's a defect with respect to the publication date, the advertisement, so that has to be carried. With respect to the second one, there is a resolution that we propose that be adopted by the Council correcting or amending the effective date, and therefore that one will be carried to the second of August as well. And then with respect to the third one, which is the Handicap Parking Ordinance, unfortunately there was a defect with respect to that one, that's the advertised date, and that one has to go to the second of August as well. So technically, when we get to the meeting agenda, we will be making motions to carry those, yes. Okay? All right, is that it?
That's it.
All right, so then we get to ordinance on first reading. One, ordinance to amend and supplement revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10, Dot 16, Stopping and Standing or Parking, Section 10, Dot 16, Zero 5, Zero, Schedule 29, Time Limit Parking, and Chapter 10, Dot 12, Traffic Control Regulations, Section 10, Dot 12, Dot 06, Zero, and 10, Dot 12, Dot 07, Zero, Schedule 8B Loading Zones, reference to Liberty Street. Two, ordinance to amend and supplement revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10, Dot 16, Stopping and Standing or Parking, Section 10, Dot 16, Zero 2, Zero, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, reference to Sedan Street. Three, ordinance to amend and supplement revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10, Dot 16, Stopping and Standing or Parking, Section 10, Dot 16, Dot 02, Zero, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, reference to Patterson Street. Four, ordinance to amend and supplement revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10, Dot 16, Stopping and Standing and Parking Section, 10, Dot 16, Zero 2, Zero, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, under all railroad elevations, of Byers Street, Handy Street, Patterson Street, Sedan Street, and Townsend Street. And we have resolutions. One, approval agenda amendments. Two, approval payroll. Three, authorize refund redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, approval or disapproval renewed with the license with the condition, 2017, 2018, Castmas Incorporated, JJ's Tavern Lounge, 732, for 186 Hamilton Street liquor license, number 121433034005. Five, amend the person-to-person transfer liquor license from double, uh, W, W restaurant, Step Your Face to MSP Restaurants Incorporated, 49 Eastern Avenue liquor license, 121433088003. Six, out of the request of Chief Financial Officer, resolution certifying review of 2016 Annual Audit. Seven, approve premise, uh, offer of raffle at 40 Livingston Avenue for New Brunswick Elks Lodge, 324, dated December 9, 2017. Eight, approve award of contract with Atlantic Tactical Incorporated for furnished and delivery of work uniforms for housing inspection and fire prevention, term 12 months commencing July 20, 2017, ending July 19, 2018, specification number 60217P, not to exceed $15,800. Nine, approved payment of special public defender services with Richard Beach, not to exceed $1,354, $350. Ten, per request from parking vehicles in Bubballo Park requested by Turner Construction, uh, location, Bubballo Park interest roadway off College Avenue for parking employees of Turner Construction Company who are working on a project at St. Peter's Hospital, number parking spaces up to 30, dates July 10, 2017 to December 31, 2017, Monday, Monday to Friday, non-pretoria. Eleven, authorize purchase by Fire Department of one used vehicle, East Franklin Volunteer Fire Department, for one 1995 Spartan Marion Pumper Truck, not to exceed $20,000. Twelve, approve award of contract with WTH Technologies for proprietary software for the Police Department, not to exceed $8,150. Thirteen, approve award of contract at WE Timberland Corporation, INC., for one week, uh, one street sweeper for the Department of Public Works, not to exceed $210,000, $22,095, National Joint Powers Alliance. Fourteen, approve purchase of department under state contract, A-D-S-895851-M003, software license and related services for SHI International, for she, uh, international corporation for software license renewal for the Police Department, not to exceed $16,196,075. Fifteen, approve appointment of council for Benedict and Hoffman for representation of Police Director Anthony Caputo in the matter of Deion Napier versus City of New Brunswick et al., not to exceed $10,000. Sixteen, authorize the mayor and city clerk to exercise agreement with Middlesex County, with Middlesex County for Livingston Avenue Road Diet construction. Seventeen, approve award of contract with Rapid Pump and Meter Service Incorporated, Incorporated for sanitary sewer pump station maintenance, term 24 month period commencing in July 20, 2017, ending July 19, 2019, specification number 601, S-17P, not to exceed $178,000. Eighteen, approve award of contracts for furnished and delivered janitorial supplies, with term enterprise Allen Paper and Company, the amount of $65,568.40, with Central Poly Corporation, amount $7,568.90, with Bioshine Incorporated, the amount of $2,704. Term 12 months commencing July 20, 2017, and ending July 19, 2018, specification number 593, S-17P. Nineteen, approve, uh, res, approve amendment of resolution, R-081620, reason for the additional amount of $3,166,68 to pay the final invoice, with DGL Rapto Polus Incorporated doing business as Mako Collision Repair and Auto Paying for automotive body repairs for the Police Department, specification of 527, S-16P, not to exceed $3,166,68. Approval of this change will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Twenty, pull this unnecessary request of the city clerk, approve ABC liquor license agreement. Twenty-one, rescind, uh, resolution, R-111655, as the liquor license, number 1214, Dot 33, Dot 072, Dot 006, for the Lufano Incorporated. Twenty-two, approve award of contract with Garden State Highway Products for 2017 furnished and delivered regulatory signs, specification number 912, S-17, not to exceed $25,782.8. Twenty-three, approve appointment of councils to Lawrence Benjamin Esquire, characterization of Police Director versus Michael Powers in the matter of Deion Napier versus City of New Brunswick et al., not to exceed $10,000. Twenty-four, approve the release, approve the release of the site performance bond, irreparable letter of credit, number 22643, in the amount of $259,920, $259,920 for the balance of site inspection fees to Construction Management Associates Incorporated for 17 Line Street, block number 71, lot number 4, Dash 01. Twenty-five, approve the release of site inspection fees in the amount to Nicholson Corporation for Johnson &amp; Johnson World headquarters, 501 George Street, lot number 34, lot number 1. Twenty-six, authorize purchase by Police Department under Star, uh, under New Jersey Star, New Jersey State Contract, S-16, S-16, 00027, from Route 23 Auto Mall LLC for five 2017 Nissan Frontier for the Police Department, not to exceed $108,240.50. Twenty-seven, approve Chapter 19 budget insertion, State of New Jersey Department of Agriculture for 2017 summer food service program, amount of $511,830.72. Twenty-eight, approve resolution to authorize refund of escrow to Highland Datacom Electrical LLC for refund of police extra duty, amount of $5,000. Twenty-nine, authorize tax collector payment, uh, tax collector to transfer several taxes and utility over payments. Thirty, approve award of contract to McNeilus Financial Incorporated doing business at McNeilus Truck and Manufacturing for one rear loader for Department of Public Works, not to exceed $85,395, to the National Joint Powers Alliance. Thirty-one, approve award of contract with Foley Incorporated for one crane carriage for Department of Public Works, not to exceed $193,400, National Joint Powers Alliance. Thirty-two, authorize the purchase by Division of Parts under New Jersey Approved Co-op, uh, number 65, MCE, CCPS, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Pricing System from Justville Incorporated, for one backhoe loader for the Division of Parts, not to exceed Thirty-three, approve relaxation of noise order requested by Cerro Mendez Construction LLC, reason to replace the sidewalk at 56 Patterson Street, Middlesex County Courthouse, which also includes Elm Road and Byers Street, dates Saturday, July 22nd and 29, 2017, alternate dates, Saturdays, August 5th, 12th, 19th, 2017, time 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Thirty-four, approve authorization to advertise for installation of ADA grants at the intersection of Lee and March, specification number 91517. Thirty-five, approve amendment resolution, reason include evening work to Public Service Electric and Gas, Gas Modernization, uh, Program Phase Two, approve relaxation of the noise ordinance authorized by Public Service Electric and Gas Company, PSNG, date Monday through Friday from 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., and Saturdays from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., time period, uh, July 24, 2017 to September 2nd, holidays excluded. Thirty-six, approve offer of this raffle 50/50 at 103 Church Street for the Rotary Club, uh, New Brunswick, date December 17, 2017. And that's it. We have public discussion, and we'll have the next dates to remember. All right. Meeting will now come to order with clerk please call roll.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Egan?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig?
Here.
Council President Fleming?
Here. Please be advised that the notice and requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied to the annual notice with the sufficient notice and time and place of conduct of all public meetings. Uh, the municipal clerk of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk as a replacement appropriate bulletin board, uh, in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey has been transmitted to official newspaper, but the City of New Brunswick namely the home news. Please stand for the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to those that are defending freedom around the world, those that have lost their lives defending freedom, and those that continue to defend freedom around the world. Thank you. All right, we got minutes, motion on the minutes, motion.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
All right, so we go to the ordinance on first reading.
I'm going to go with your ordinance is on second reading, and we'll just council present, and call out the first ordinance, and then as they indicate during the three, we'll get to the second.
Oh, okay. All right, so we got ordinance on second reading. One, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 5, Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5, Dot 111, Records.
I'm making motion to the agenda as the ordinance still on August 2nd. Move it carry to the next meeting. Proper way.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
Okay, we have ordinance, uh, second reading number two, ordinance to amend and supplement revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 13, Public Services, Chapter 13, Dot 08, Sewer Service Systems, Section 13, Dot 08, Dot 340, Schedule, uh, Schedule A, Schedule of Charges, Sewer Rates.
With respect to this particular ordinance, Mr. Council President, Members of Council, we have a resolution to amend it, which we're asking be adopted prior to this ordinance being listed for second hearing on August 2nd. The resolution would correct the effective date that was in the ordinance that was initially adopted. So we begin a motion.
Motion, resolution.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
I'm the comment.
Anybody from the public like to speak on this resolution?
Good evening, this is the Council, Charles Cradell, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. So this is the ordinance that was passed with a mathematical error in it?
Correct.
Yes.
Mission.
Okay. And so you were about to amend it to fix that, but am I correct to understand that now you call it an error with the effective date?
Yes, correct, yes.
Okay, and what should, what will the effective date be?
August 3rd.
August 3rd, and the mathematical error, which component was that a part of?
That was with respect to Schedule 1 on the actual rates.
Okay, and how bad, how bad of an error was it?
I'm not able to answer that, because actually Mr. Rockland had complied that he corrected it. I don't have the old ordinance to compare against, because I really don't know what he means by how bad. Alls I know is they were inaccurate, we had to correct them, and it's a substantive change, so therefore the ordinance had to be amended.
Okay, and that'll happen on August 2nd, and can you tell me, have any bills been sent out as a result of the incorrect error, or non error?
None.
And so none will be?
No.
Okay.
Anybody else from the public? Anyone with a resolution?
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
Now we need a motion to list the ordinance for second reading on August 2nd as amended.
Motion, agendaizing to August 2nd.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
We have three, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10, Dot 20, Handicap Parking, Section 10, Dot 20, Dot 01, Zero, Schedule 39 Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, at 16 Curtis Place and 102 Comstock Street.
Motion to carry the ordinance.
Motion to carry the ordinance to, uh, August 2nd.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
Okay, now we go to ordinance on first reading. An ordinance to amend and supplement revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10, Dot 16, Stopping and Standing and Parking, Section 10, Dot 16, Dot 05, Zero, Schedule 29, Time Limit Parking, and Chapter 10, Dot 12, Traffic and Control Regulations, Section 10, Dot 20, Uh, 12, Dot 06, Zero, and 10, Dot 10, 10, Dot 12, Dot 07, Zero, Schedule 8B Loading Zones, reference to Liberty Street.
Move the ordinance setting down August 2nd at 5:30 p.m., same date to be out of the time.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10, Uh, Dot 16, Stopping and Standing and Parking, Section 10, Dot 16, Zero 2, Zero, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, reference to Sedan Street.
Move the ordinance setting down August 2nd at 5:30 p.m., same date to be out of the time.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
Uh, three, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10, Dot 16, Schedule Standing or Parking, Section 10, Dot 16, Zero 2, Zero, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, reference to Patterson Street.
Move the ordinance setting down August 2nd at 5:30 p.m., same date to be out of the time.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
We have four, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10, Dot 16, Stopping and Standing or Parking, Section 10, Dot 16, Zero 2, Zero, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, under all railroad elevations, Byers Street, Handy Street, Patterson Street, Sedan Street, and Townsend Street.
Move the ordinance setting down August 2nd at 5:30 p.m., same date to be out of the time.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
Okay, now we go on to the resolutions, uh, resolutions 32, all the way up to 67.
Now with respect to these, Mr. Council President, Members of Council, I'm asking that you hold 35, because that deals with the Castmas license.
Okay.
To deal with that separate when we prove that that particular matter, and we are holding 37 and 51, and these are the states they're in.
Well, anybody from the public like to speak on any of the resolutions, resolutions only?
I have a question for you guys. Mr. Shamlee, there's two resolutions, 746 and 754, appointing two different lawyers for, um, Police Director Caputo, for the same case. Can you explain why two different ones?
Well, one is appointing a lawyer for the Police Director, that's 46, and then the other one is appointing a attorney for Officer Powers, that's number 54. And this particular lawsuit, unfortunately, the new lawsuit, Mr. Napier is suing the City and the Police Department and the Police Director, because he's the Police Director alleging wrongful arrest in connection with his arrest and prosecution, among other things, and as is normally the case, with respect to the obligations under law, we have an obligation to provide a defense on punitive damage claims, and that's what these two resolutions accomplish.
Thank you.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradell, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. First one, I ask is 736, can you please tell me the amount of the, uh, the cost of the liquor license?
Mr. Council President, Members of Council, I know that the Council, on behalf of the applicant, the purchasers here, Mr. Bradshaw, with his client, I do not have the application in front of me, if Mr. Terese might with respect to that question. The answer is $975,000.
Wow, is that, is that the, uh, is that a new record?
What was the question? What was the question?
The question was the, the amount of sale of the liquor license.
The price.
Not the product.
Correct.
I don't have that record.
Yeah, yeah, not.
$150.
For the license?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. $150 for the license, but the, the business is also being sold along with it.
Yes.
Got you.
That's correct.
Thank you. 742, uh, what, can you tell me the motivation to buy a used pumper truck?
You tend to sell.
I don't sell trucks.
Yeah, well, um, I guess why, why are we buying a fire, a pumper truck from 1995?
Uh, this is a reserve piece that will replace an engine that's older than that. It's a disrepair, uh, so this, that engine will be sold, this new engine will be a reserve piece, it's not a front line piece, but it'll fill that gap.
Okay, thank you, and so the truck that's being taken offline, what is the name of that truck, what's it called?
It's a Seagree, it's the manufacturer.
Seagree?
Engine 15.
Engine 15, okay, I think, you know, that one was, yeah, well, thank you. 743, uh, can you tell me what type of software this is that the police are purchasing for $8,000?
It's a crime mapping software, which will enable us to map incidents around the city, and eventually be able to publish it, so everyone should see, could see what's going on, timeline is correct.
Now, this sounds like a terrific step in the right direction, thank you. 745, what does this software do for $16,000?
This is our, we have this software placed now, it's the, you do the license renewal, it's the scheduling for everyone within the Police Department, how it schedules work.
Personnel, staff scheduling, okay. I, I want to thank the Councilmen for asking about these two police cases, or this, this one police case that, that you're being asked to approve $20,000 worth of legal bills already. I guess Mr. Shamlee already enumerated the, uh, some of the details of the case, but one of the accusations is that, uh, there was, uh, you know, physical violence, brutality, an attack on this, this person, is that, is that included in the complaint, that there, that there was, uh, excessive force used?
I review the complaint, everything is in the complaint. I, I wouldn't dispute Mr. Cradell's statement, I believe with these types of complaints, the allegations enumerate from wrongful arrest to, uh, use of unnecessary force, to malicious prosecution, to, uh, it's, it's a, it's a standard form of complaint that I recall saying, but I don't know the facts of the case other than what's alleged in the complaint.
Can you tell me are there videos that would show the arrest?
I wouldn't even know that, and if, even if there were, we wouldn't discuss them, because now it's pending litigation, so.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm very concerned that the New Brunswick Police are not on par with surrounding police departments in terms of getting body cameras deployed as part of the uniform. It makes perfect sense, and indeed, we are seeing, uh, you know, in New Jersey right now, what other police departments are doing because of body cameras, and New Brunswick is keeping the public in the dark, and so that's why I ask if there's a video, because it's less likely that there is a video, because the New Brunswick Police have not taken the steps to implement body cameras. Is this an issue that you also think, uh, we need action on?
Do we need, yes, I mean, I think there's a, I think that it's a step in the right direction.
What is?
For body, for body cameras.
Okay, well, when will the city take that? When will the city take that step?
Can we, we'll go back to that during the public, of course, because that's really not.
You'll address it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. 747, the road diet, can you tell me the nature of this agreement, what, is this just for the, uh, engineering, or is this for actual construction?
It's for engineering and construction, as, as the Council is aware, probably the public at large, there, there's been, um, an agreement between the City and County, come together, redesign, reconstruct Livingston Avenue, make it safer for pedestrian and vehicular traffic, improvements to different intersections as well, uh, and this particular agreement will memorialize the relationship between the City and the County with respect to the design and the construction and the payment for that particular project.
Is 50/50 split?
50/50 split, after the grant monies that the County anticipates getting from the New Jersey Department of Transportation.
And is there a timeframe for when it might actually be completed?
I know the project's gonna take some time, I know they've been anxious to get it going, although Mr. Moody or Mr. Valen can help me with the time, Mr. Valen has his hand up, maybe he has an answer.
I can speak to that specific, the design, the County has a five-phase design process, the last phase is actually the issuance of construction documents for bid. Currently, they, the Phase Two Design Documents have been submitted, and I believe approved, so now they're moving on to Phase Three. It'll be my guess, it's probably at least It'll be my guess, it's probably at least another six months within design, such that the county would like to be in a position to initiate the work in the spring, but that's hopefully an intenable date. It's still tentative.
Okay. On, I guess, 748, the very next one, this is a two-year agreement for pump station maintenance for the sanitary sewer system. Can you just tell me how many sanitary sewer pump stations are in New Brunswick?
There are five.
Five, and this is covering all five?
That's correct.
Thanks. Can you just explain 752 to me? Why is the resolution being rescinded for this liquor license?
This was a pocket license that was renewed as we normally renew our licenses. When we sent it to the state ABC, they indicated that they hadn't got the necessary special approval, licensee didn't get the special approval required. We were aware that they needed it, so the state has instructed us to rescind the renewal until that necessary prerequisite is accomplished. A pocket license.
Gotcha. 756, the Nixon Nicholson Corporation. Is this related to the museum for Jane J?
Yes, this is. And if I could ask, I would like to have this one pulled. The amount that is on there appears to be, to be the performance bond amount and not the inspection fee amount. I would like to have that checked to make sure that it is correct and put it back on for the next council agenda.
That's fine. We'll pull back the request of the city engineer, we'll pull 56, or G25.
Thank you. And I would just like to close by asking you to pull the 746 payment for Mr. Caputo's lawyer. And I mean this seriously, that if you have concerns about how much money is going to lawyers for the police, specifically for Director Caputo, that you can withhold payment for this meeting and ask the police director to show up here for a change and explain himself to you and to the public before you pay any more legal bills for him. So if you have any concerns about the spending on Director Caputo's legal bills, I would encourage you to ask to have pulled from the consent agenda. It's your right to do it. Please pull from the consent agenda, 746. Thank you.
I want to comment on also Resolution 746. I know Dionne Napier personally, and when that incident happened, he was in a hospital with a puncture lung, and he was arrested on sight. And the police department said might have been arrested and handcuffed to a hospital bed, but Captain Miller in a previous council meeting said that he couldn't find him and the officers arrested him. And my question is, you know, a young man with a puncture lung, beaten up by the police Mr. Shamlee said that the city has an obligation to police officers as far as their representation. My question is, if this is not a pro-cop city, if you guys are going to balance the scale with community and police officers, what obligation are you giving to the community residents outside of just mandating them to go to court? What obligation do the community residents have? He said that, you know, that they have an obligation to represent police officers, $20,000 worth of obligation. My question is, what obligation do the community residents have in a situation like this happen?
He said what obligation?
What obligation does this city have to community residents? You didn't give any? Nothing came to Dionne Napier. He had to find an attorney when he was on.
Right.
These officers, attorneys getting paid for. Mr. Bitterman is getting the hand over fist every time he had to represent a cop. So at some point, if you're not pro-cop, if you do want justice and you don't want these cops walking around arrogant, feeling like it's okay to beat up somebody, what obligation, what support will you give a community resident? Because they are... I mean, everybody has a presumption of innocence until proven guilty, including Dionne Napier. But it's only being exercised on behalf of the police officers.
That's state... I mean, that's according to state law. I don't think... Mr. Shamlee, is that right?
Yeah, statutory law that we have an obligation to provide a defense of police officer in a civil case. But I think Mr. Pittman's question was directed to something that is not provided in state statute. I think he wants to know what the city's position is about the affair to residents with...
Residents, yes. Because I'm sure that you guys are going to approve this resolution. Just, you know, I'm quite sure you are. And if that's the case, if you're going to blindly approve this resolution, then what balance, what balance are you willing to give? You have to be pro-police if you're just going to approve...
I mean, you say pro... I mean, we're... That's all. Anybody who works for the city, when we get sued, we have to provide, we have to provide representation.
Right.
But we can't provide for... That's like arguing against yourself.
But you can't vote... You are voting on this, right?
Hmm?
You are voting on this, right?
Yes.
And you can't... You're not obligated to vote to approve it, right?
Under state law, we provide representation.
So you're going to vote yes regardless? So this is just a...
It's not. Because under state law, we have to provide representation. We've been around, we've done this before. You know, I mean, it's anybody that works, if you work for the city, I mean, are we happy? Have we lived a litigious society? No, but under state law.
There's no but, because I don't buy law. Because at the end of the day, what are you going to be revolutionary and find a way to change circumstances? Because under state law, at some point, it was, like I said all the time, it was okay to rape. So would you be sitting in that position in the early 1900s saying, "Under state law, you know, rape is okay"? No, at some point, you have to change the culture.
Can we stick with the resolution?
This isn't.
No, but now you're going outside if you're going back to the early 1900s.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying your stance on things. You're staying under state law. We have to do it. But do you agree with what you're doing?
We live in a law... We live in society laws.
I understand.
Okay. All right. Anybody else on the resolutions?
Move the...
I'm sharing.
For hypothetical, I don't know if you can do that, but if Bobby said no, what happens?
What would happen is, is the officer could pursue a claim against the city to force us to cover him. When the officer could hire this particular lawyer at the lawyer's then going rate, and when the case were resolved, they would believe to that particular officer, he would have a suit against the city for all the legal fees that were incurred.
Could be more than?
Oh, a lot more, because the rate under the ordinance is eighty-five dollars an hour. That's the ordinance rate for defense of these types of things. So, yes, because he would cost the city a lot more money. And they would sue us and they would win, in my opinion.
I move the resolutions. I got to confuse myself with the other ones.
Still noted.
Same here.
And we're holding 37, 51, 56, and 35 for the time being.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council Member Egan?
Yes.
Council Member Escobar?
Yes.
Council Member Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. All right, that's the resolutions. Now we will go to...
Mr. Council President, members of council, I'd like to go back to D on your agenda, which is public hearings. I, briefly before we started the meeting, Mr. Sika, who's present here representing Casmas Inc., had a short communication with me that I'd like to discuss with council in a closed session regarding a potential resolution of this particular condition hearing and the challenge that may result down with the ABC directive should there be an appeal. So I would ask council to make a motion to go into closed session for purposes of discussion relative to resolving the hearing issues and the renewal of the liquor license with conditions.
Motion.
Motion, go into closed session.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council Member Egan?
Yes.
Council Member Escobar?
Yes.
Council Member Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
Can you move the session?
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council Member Egan?
Yes.
Council Member Escobar?
Yes.
Council Member Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes of the closed session will reveal that council members discussed with their legal counsel, a proposal by the licensee, Casmas Inc., through their counsel, Mr. Sika, to work out an arrangement whereby the licensee will consent to the special conditions imposed upon this licensed establishment, which were contained in the August 9, 2016 order of the director of the ABC, Jonathan Nerson. Those special conditions have been, the special conditions that have been in place for the 16, 17 licensed year as of the date of this particular order. My understanding, council, Mr. Sika acknowledges, and maybe he wants to do that on the record, on behalf of his client, that he can sentence to the reinquisition of these special conditions for the 17, 18 licensed term.
That's correct.
Having said that, if that is acceptable to council, I have a form of resolution, which I could mark up pretty quickly, but it will say that the city council, the city of New Brunswick, renews the application of plenary consumption license number 1214-33-034-005, issued to Casmas Inc., trading as JJ Tavern Lounge 732, for the 17, 2017, 2018 licensed year with the following conditions, and these are the conditions that were set forth in the director's order. Licensee agrees to employ three in-house staff security guards and one extra-duty police officer Saturday and Sunday from 10:00 PM to 2:30 AM. Licensee agrees to employ two in-house staff security guards Thursday and Friday from 10:00 PM to 2:30 AM. Licensee shall provide and run the police department ABC enforcement unit, Officer DeGraw, with notification of any changes to its employee list or scheduling of any special or promotional events, at least 72 hours prior to any change in the employee list or the date of a special or promotional event. Events shall be defined as any occurrence of the offering of music by a DJ group, et cetera, performance display, holiday party, et cetera. By the close of business every Wednesday, licensee shall provide and run the police department ABC enforcement unit notice of any events or activities scheduled for the following seven days. Licensee will also advise whether it will open for business on the following Tuesday. The licensee is open for business on Tuesday. It also agrees to employ three in-house staff security guards and one private security guard from a licensed security firm approved by the city of New Brunswick from 10 to 2:30 AM. Those are the special conditions in the director's order, which will be incorporated by reference into council's resolution. If that is satisfactory to the council, I have Resolution R-071735 for council's consideration on the...
Make a motion. We accept resolution?
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
You should have public comment.
All right. Anybody from the public would like to speak on the new amended resolution, correct?
Correct.
Seeing none?
Move the resolution. Do you see?
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council Member Egan?
Yes.
Council Member Escobar?
Yes.
Council Member Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. All right. All right, so now we go to the public comment section, public discussion. Please step forward to the microphone. Please give your name and address to the record. And reminder, you have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Pastor Pico Shaw. Church is Byers Street, just in Manhattan. We get to address the issue and recreation of park. First of all, I'd like to say thank you on that experience resulting in that mission that we have several months ago, last month. It's been a... It's been fruitful. We have the sprinklers down in the park. I'm not sure if you're aware of it. And it's been passed by sometime a week or two before the Fourth of July. And I have four different stories, because I'm not sure what the truth of the matter is, so I'm trying to find some resolution. One, the last story I got from two or three different park employees, where first the kids broke it. I find out that there's no way that they could have. But then I was told that it would be fixed, there's a part being ordered. I'm not sure. But for the last couple of weeks, we've seen, I've seen dilemma here almost every day during the week with kids, interact with the kids in different parts of my ministry, and I've seen families being turned away. They literally come up in their minivans as they're going to the beach just to get wet. Last couple of days, you know how hot it was, and it's... They're throwing water bottles and now all kinds of things, and it looks ridiculous. And I'm quite certain that we can resolve this issue by ordering the park and fixing it. So I don't know if someone can give me some information about why isn't it fixed? I'm seeing your case.
The Parks Department had called me. We had the contractor that installed the park out there to look at it with them. It was determined, it was a pipe and it was a break in the pipe in the valve box. And they were told which parts to go out and purchase, and they were going to install them and have it back in service. I was not informed that it was not in service, so it was my understanding that it was back in service.
And so you would agree that it should have been done, right?
Yes.
And that's my concern, that this is kids that are suffering. This is summertime, they're at school, parents come up there, and we don't have an answer. It's ridiculous. It really is. It's embarrassing. You know, the kids suffer like that, and there are some things that visually, they're going to get hurt, going in the bathroom, water bottle, water balloons and all of that, just because they want to get wet. And I'm not... I'm trying to protect them, but I can't stop them, because I don't want all of them, and I can't keep my eye on everybody. You know, God forbid, one of the water bathrooms can slip on all the mess that's in the bathroom. And we got a larger case because we didn't just put the pipe there.
I will get in touch with Flanagan's Contracting Corporation tomorrow, find out what was to be ordered. They will give me the list of the parts. I will get in touch with the Parks Department, make sure that they are ordered. Actually, they are universal parts that could just be picked up at any plumbing supply store, and then they're glued joints, so my understanding was it was installed. So I will find out why it is not installed, or if there was another issue as to why it cannot be operated.
I want to ask something, because I was asking about this, and I know about, and I'm very jealous about those water spouts, because I was the one who suggested that, and I wanted to know the part. So someone was asking, you know, and that was the first part that has them. And at the beginning, yeah, the kids were the ones, you know, with that, I've been asking for the past few, it's the same thing, because it hasn't been working. And to the best of my knowledge, and it is, I was told that it was a pipe, but it's nothing to do with the... Is that... My question to you, Mr. Moody, is, was the situation with the pipe, is something that the city is responsible, or the developer, or the person, or the company who constructed that?
The city made this agreement for the year with the contractor. This is an item where, to my understanding, there was an improper operation of the foot actuator that is in the spray park. It builds up pressure in the line, and that pressure in the line buildup blew out one of the connections that is in the valve box. So the parts that had to be ordered have been ordered. I have asked the company that provided the spray park to provide me with the operation basically in English and in Spanish, so that can be posted. Because it's my understanding that kids that had basically no ability to wait for the spray park to come on, just sat there and pounded on that actuator, build up pressure and broke the system. So we want to have rules that are set out, so they will understand that there is a delay between the time they step on the actuator and the water is reset as far as the timing to come out. So there are really two actions. The second action I'm working on, the first action should have been taken place, so it should have been operated.
So who's responsible for this in this, that pipe?
It would be the Parks Department for this particular one. There are other things that are the contractors, we have had him come in and do minor repairs. But this one is a situation where it's an operation, it is not a construction. It was constructed in accordance with all the manufacturer's requirements, and there was an operation, well, reason why it is not working. So that would not go back to the contractor.
Are you able to talk about that, sir?
Yeah, I'll just give his number. He has my number.
Yes, I have.
He has my number. The second part, maybe if I can, just a thought while I'm thinking, I see... Let's talk about, maybe if I can, just a thought, while I'm thinking and I seen it, I guess you're talking about the little knob by the sprinklers that you press?
That is the actuator. When you step on that, it resets the timing for the spray park. And it basically takes up to 45 seconds for the spray to come on.
Okay, okay.
And if the kids, and I'm told by the Parks Department personnel that is there daily, they get anxious, they step on that a number of times. Each time it sends a signal to the actuator, builds up pressure, and at this point, the feeling is that the pressure that was built up in the system broke the pipe. But the replacement of the piping was a simple plumbing supply purchase. And when I called the contractor, he told me, he gave all the information to the Department of Parks, they were going to pick it up and install it themselves. So my understanding was it should have been installed and operating. So I will have to ask if there is another issue.
Okay.
And as you were looking for too, in terms of instructions, to be able to tell what they're waiting for?
Yes, that is secondary, and I do not have that yet.
And how long do they stay on for?
I'm sorry?
How long does it stay on for?
I think it stays on for two minutes, but I could be incorrect.
Okay, so wait for it?
And then after it shuts off, you have to step on the actuator, and it resets the timing and comes back on.
I was gonna say, we can implement some kind of posts, if you will, written in Spanish and English.
That's what I'm asking for.
Okay.
So I have asked for that, I do not have it yet.
Would you get the word out, Congress?
Yeah, yeah, you told me the time now, I knew, I never knew what it was, and I was just gonna touch it and go. But I'm quite certain if they don't get what they want, they're gonna, like all of us, keep punching until they get it.
Right.
And then it can.
Like the elevator button?
Pressure back, exactly, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Yes, name and address for the record?
P. D. B. Martin, Charles Cradwell, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Do you have an urge to call on Congress to impeach the President of the United States?
No. No.
No, okay, because I think, I think you should. I want you to, as your constituent. And I'll tell you that I did reach out to Congressman Bellone on Twitter, encouraged him to sign on to an article of impeachment that has been drafted and introduced.
Has he signed it?
To my knowledge, no. But I'm calling on him, I'm using my voice to call on him, to use his power to sign on to that. And I've asked you to do the same, do you have a good reason why you call?
Because we're trying to do the business of the city right now. How many other towns have done that so far?
Well, I know of at least one city that has. I sent you the information via email.
Okay.
So you wanna be in the popular crowd, you wanna be what the other cities are doing?
No, I'm saying that right now, I don't think that a local body right now, calling on the impeachment, no matter how personally we feel, calling the impeachment of president, I think that's gonna be a long way away, and I think that we could direct our energies in other places.
Well, I disagree, I think you're making a mistake, I think you're gonna be on the wrong side of history here. And I'd also like to encourage you to call on the Assembly to impeach our governor. Thank you. One thing, seriously, I hope you will consider coming to Monday's meeting of the New Brunswick Ethics Board. There was not one, but two officials from the Parking Authority that are gonna have hearings. And these hearings are about some violations of the local government ethics law. I think it'd be important for the elected leaders of New Brunswick to be there. Can I count on any of you to attend Monday at 5:30 at the community room in the library?
How about you?
How about the liaison to the Parking Authority?
No, I will not be there.
You have an excuse, or? Are you working, is there, you just don't wanna go?
I won't be there.
Won't be there? How about the other two councilmembers, do you make it?
I will not be there.
No.
I'll get an old video for you, I think there's cause for concern at the Housing Authority. There's a reason it's the top story in our newspaper this month.
I said Housing Authority. Oh, first you said Parking Authority.
Well, the officials are with the Parking Authority. So now I'm moving on to the next thing that I wanted to say. And I think there's a reason we put it on the front page. By the way, one of the, you know, since you mentioned that one of the defendants works for the Housing Authority and is a board member at the Parking Authority, you've accomplished that by putting her on the board. So now she is gonna have an ethics hearing, and you're gonna not attend. But I do wanna say that the city clerk is doing a great job, and I thank him for helping with Oprah requests. There've been some pretty important decisions that have come down from the New Jersey Supreme Court about the public's right to obtain certain records under Oprah, and one of those records that is affected and now public is videos from body cameras. So I really wanna encourage you, if you're, since you're so concerned about the business of New Brunswick, how about our police department catches up with Carteret? How about we catch up with Rutgers? How about we catch up with these other towns, smaller towns in many cases, that have gotten body cameras for the police? Why can't New Brunswick get that same?
You just supposed that, you just said, since I'm so concerned about the city of New Brunswick, I'm all for it. I just know that we have some things that have to clean up. I mean, you have some towns right now, they don't, it doesn't say when you have to turn them on, what's going on with them. I think it's a positive thing, I think it's positive. I just, I mean, generally, I'm just looking at. I think that anytime we talk about reform, police reform, I think it's on a macro level. And I think body cameras is a step in the right direction, but I also think there's other things that have to go on with that, oh, for two.
Okay, well, just a couple of things that have already come out because of these body cameras is video of the Carteret Mayor's brother, who's a police officer, beating up a teenager. Also, the mayor of Broadway clearly messed up getting into car crashes and getting favorable treatment from that police department. So the body cameras show when the officers do the things right, but they also show when they do the things wrong. And not having body cameras is keeping us in the dark. It's keeping it a secret whether the officers acted right or wrong. And you keep getting all these lawsuits. One way to really have a trump card in these lawsuits, if the police are truly behaving properly, would be to have body cameras. It'll save you money in the long run. Look at the bills you're paying here. Do something, do, take an action, and appropriate funds to get body cameras. Why won't you take action?
So have you been doing it?
So far, all I got is words from you. When will you take action?
One more time.
So I'll take that as a.
No, you can take it the way you want to take it.
When the administration puts a resolution in front of you, then you'll pass it.
You take it the way that you want to take it.
All right, that's how I take it. And I'll be honest, I think it's, you know, I'm a little disappointed that nobody mentioned that someone's life was taken. Desiree Alvarado passed away, she was killed in New Brunswick. And I wanna, you know, say I would hope you rest in peace, and I wanna extend my condolences to every friend and family member. And can you please, does the city have anything you can say about this loss of life that happened recently?
I knew her when she was young, a little bit younger. And I just found out last night that it was her. I wasn't sure who was, because the newspaper never identified who was the person. Go through Facebook, I saw friends, I found out, so it was sad. Anything that would have person, and I don't know the circumstances surrounding them, but I was gonna mention it, when I was gonna say, and I made an announcement later on about Community Bureau that we unveiled in tomorrow, which is about healthy relationships. And so thinking about it, regardless of, like I said, I don't know what the circumstances were, but it is sad, so my, this was for the family that lives also.
Thank you, and I don't wanna pry into the circumstances, but can you please at least tell me, can the city or the police department say whether this was a random crime, a random shooting, or did the deceased know?
It was not a random act.
Thank you, and God bless, have a great night, hope it straighten up the fire, right, thank you.
I'm the members of the council, council president, my name is Junior Miron, with the Environment Lab, Secret Food and Water Watch, offices down the street here on Bear. Been here in New Brunswick for over six years. We, I'm here today addressing you about our off fossil fuels elected officials pledge. I believe one of our great fellows, Rutgers Christina supplied Joe with the pledge last week. Basically, what the pledge asks elected officials to commit to is 100% renewable energy for New Jersey, a guide for New Brunswick, and hopefully leads to greater legislation around the country. And from what I've been hearing, there's currently a bill in the House that'll be introduced, hopefully this week, maybe next week, that would get us to this goal of 100% renewable energy by 2035. Basically, this goal comes up after the U.S. Conference of Mayors, which is a nonpartisan, bipartisan group of mayors throughout the country, that passed this resolution this year after the election of our new president, committing to getting municipalities to 100% renewable energy by 2035. When I mean renewable energy, I mean renewable energy generation, and with the goal of reducing pollution and carbon and methane emissions. So we were actually, I'm frankly presenting to the councilmembers, I believe it was last week or, or two weeks ago, every single one of the councilmembers signed on to this elected official pledge, including the mayor, and I'm sure y'all know Franklin, they have a lot of councilmembers, I don't know why it's so many. And we're glad Franklin, here in the 7th Legislative District, signed on to this 100% renewable energy goal. Other elected officials in municipalities have signed on, Scadaway, members in the school board have signed on, Highland Park, three members of the council, two state senators, Senator Lowry to Weinberg, who's the Majority Leader, Senator Talley here in Joseph County, other legislators in other counties here in New Jersey. And I have a copy of the pledge here today, if y'all misplaced it or didn't bring it with you today. We need to be more proactive in fighting, fighting this climate change denying president. We currently have a governor that doesn't believe in the science and climate change. So that comes, the proactivity in fighting climate change comes down to local municipalities and county municipalities, and that's where New Brunswick can come in, as one of the biggest towns here in Joseph County. I hope y'all will each consider supporting this goal of 100% renewable energy by 2035. After the withdrawal of the Paris Climate Agreement, many municipalities have either signed on to supporting that climate agreement or supporting even more progressive goals like this one of 100% renewable energy, NAFTA 2035. So I'm glad we stayed behind the meeting, at the end of the meeting. I also have pledges here that I wish I, I don't know if I can add to. And yeah, glad we stayed behind if any of the councilmembers, council presidents have any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
To Mel Peck, Mr. Peck, New Brunswick, New Jersey. First off, last council meeting I was at, you said that you were gonna call me, Captain Miller said he was gonna call me, and I never see a phone call from neither one of you guys. Captain Miller said he would call me, because I raised a concern about unfair ticketing in New Brunswick and progressive lodge, and he never called me. And you said you were gonna call me, we link up with the historical landmarks that are gonna be put out throughout New Brunswick.
Ask him to call me.
No, you didn't.
Come on, okay, ask him, okay.
You're gonna tell me you called?
I tell, okay.
Well, all right, question. If you were, when I found out about the landmarks, you got to present it. So if you had more knowledge about it, why would I call you?
Doubt the agreement, doubt the makes.
Why would I make that agreement, when I don't know anything about it? You said, you know what, I was gonna, your comments was, you know what, I was gonna mention that, because they mentioned it, and they didn't mention anything about the slavery, slavery issue. And when I brought it, you said, I was gonna reach out to you about that. That's something we can work on. I never said I was gonna call you.
Okay, okay, that was my fault.
So why didn't you call me?
I just said that was my fault, a little miscommunication.
Are you planning on calling?
Yes, I'll call you now.
Yeah, my phone number, I probably saved it's right, my phone number, right. You can call it, it won't attack.
I got your number.
All right. And he felt to call me on reference to unfair ticketing. He said he was gonna do an investigation, they were contacting. And I haven't received a phone call yet.
I believe what we spoke about was, I call your phone every time, it goes to voicemail, you don't return my call. You said you would leave your email address, but you were out here quicker than anyone else in the meeting, and you never left your email.
Did you leave a message?
I call your phone every time, and it goes to voicemail. No, at the last meeting, you said you would leave me your email, because you said your phone, you know, I don't know what, your phone, because you never answered.
I'm saying, when it goes to voicemail, did you leave a message?
I have, I don't know if I left you one the last time or not. But I have left you many messages.
So you plan on calling to get to the bottom of it?
I plan on you giving me your email address, like you said you would.
Okay, you might know.
So you said last time too, but you still haven't left it.
See, this is, you know, I get the saying. I'm a guy that never comes here and questions why the police director, Anthony Caputo, never, I used to. But then, you know, someone told me, former law enforcement agent, who actually worked for the New Brunswick Police Department, told me. They said Anthony Caputo will never come to a New Brunswick, excuse me, New Brunswick City Council meeting. I said, why? Their response was, because he's not that bright. And he said, if you're running circles over Captain Miller, and he's supposed to be one of the upper echelon of New Brunswick Police Departments, imagine what you'd do to Anthony Caputo. And my response was, if Captain Miller is the upper echelon of the New Brunswick Police Department, when, we're on the truck.
I mean, not changing insults.
But it's the truth, that was, it wasn't, it was a natural conversation. And it was his response. So I kinda get why, because he raised a concern of why he's not coming to council meetings. And that's why, that's why we raised that issue. But at the end of the day, it's totally black. And when I asked you to take a revolutionary stance to the attacks on the community residents, the reason I said that, because I sat back here, seven council meetings, and I seen you guys taking a revolutionary stance for the Latinos against ICE. And I seen how you were willing to go against the government, even though the federal government placed laws that you were willing to break and go against. You guys had letterheads and everything. But when it comes to black men being assaulted by the police department, you guys, it is, you gotta stand on your own. That's why I'm asking you, you were saying the law is the law.
No, I didn't say, now you're missing the truth. Now, now you're missing the truth. I said, we live in a nation of laws.
Okay.
And whatever we did, when we, what we did with the resolution as far as the Latino community?
Yes.
We had sit-down meetings, they had input from the community. Everybody worked together, we didn't argue, wasn't adversarial back and forth. And that's how we finally came out with something.
I'm here.
I know, but did you?
I'm here, listen, you said, you said we had sit-down meetings, right?
Yep.
With the Latino community? And it wasn't no arguing or back, I'm here.
It might have been arguing.
I represent, listen, I represent the black community. I don't need 100 people, see, this is the thing, I'm not confused. I'm on my square when I come here. I don't need to have 100 blacks coming here and saying, you know why? Because I'm looking, whether I pay attention, whether you pay attention or not, when I'm sitting there, I might look like I'm on my phone, but I pay close attention. Every Latino group that I've seen came in here was orchestrated by two or three white people. They come in, tell them to sit down, tell them to stand up, hold up your signs, put them down. So they're not coming in here like independents next. They tell them, give up, after they say their piece, they tell them, some Latinos may want to stay and sit here. They tell them all to leave, sit in the hallway, when to come upstairs. That's not independent. That's not independent, I come in here by myself and I stand on my own, with nobody pulling my strings. Every time they came in here, I don't care if it was 100, 200, 50, 60, there were two or three white people, or tell them to come in, sit down, stand in the side. When they speak on them, I stand right here and look at them. And you can go to videotape, and see, there's not one time of a group of Latinos came in here on their own merit. So you can talk to me, because even when you're sitting down talking to them, you're still talking to each other. I'll finish with this. Desiree Alvaro did pass away yesterday, and you said you knew her as a child. The family is gathering on 7th Street with Joyce Kim. If you guys have any concern about community residents, you have, you have an hour to maybe today to show your respect for the family. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Do you know?
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?[1786.56]